I want to call this meeting to order on November 12th, 2019. Welcome, everyone. And we're going to get started with roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner McElroy?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Harless?
Present and here. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner McElroy, would you lead us in the invocation? Please stand with us.
Our dear heavenly Father, the Psalmist recorded, "I will exalt you, my God the King. I will praise your name forever and ever. Every day I will praise you and worship you. Great is the Lord and most worthy of praise. Father, we are so grateful as we tune our hearts to this season of gratitude for your goodness to us, just in where you have allowed us to live in a free country, in a free community, in a community where we can enjoy so many of the beauties that you've created for us. We pray today that we would make decisions that are wise, share your wisdom, your discernment with us, help us to be humble and kind and respectful to one another, and make decisions that are going to be good for our community as a whole, for each citizen. But we thank you so much for each of the people that you have given us here. Let us respect and love them all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen."
Please stay standing and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And we have some employee introductions.
Yes, we do, Madam Mayor. First up, we'll have Chief Lair.
Mayor Commissioners, excited to bring before you tonight Robin Hood. She has been hired as-
It's a good name.
-a 911 manager. She comes to us, she's a veteran of the US Army, and she has 23 years' worth of experience working for the Austin, Texas Police Department. She retired from there as the Assistant Manager of that large agency. And then she spent two years as the Manager of the Flugerville Police Department. She is married. She moved here to Kentucky, and she's also certified in Kentucky now as a telecommunicator. All of her paperwork and everything transferred over, so we were able to get her certified through the state of Kentucky. She lives here with her husband, Reuben, and he retired from the Austin, Texas Police Department after 38 years. So she's very familiar with the law enforcement and the 911 realm. So we're looking forward to having her onboard.
Thank you. Welcome, Robin. Thank you. And thank you for your service, Robin.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, we have Tamara Tracy from Department of Planning.
Good evening, Commissioners, Madam Mayor, City Manager. I have the pleasure of introducing tonight our newest employee in the Department of Planning, the Neighborhood Project Planner, Melanie Reason. Melanieka is a Padukah and native-born and everything. She comes to us with great depth in terms of her community involvement and her community compassion. And she's out there, in fact, she's already been out there, neighborhood walks, working on the neighborhood profiles. Melanie brings to us her degree in environmental sciences, which is a great fit for, in the Planning Department. She has plenty of experience using GIS, and so she's been very instrumental in helping us with that. And it's, that leaves us with just one down. Otherwise, we're full. But Melanie has been a great asset, and like I've said for the past year and a half, I've got a team of thoroughbreds, and this just adds to it.
Congratulations. Welcome, Melanie.
Melanie, thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member's sole requests. Does anyone have anything they'd like to remove tonight from the consent agenda? No? All right. I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval, please.
Approved minutes for the October 22nd, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. Receive and file documents, personnel actions. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for a strategic health risk advisor and strategic benefit placement services with Peal and Hall and Financial Group for administration of the City of Paducah's health insurance in an amount of $78,900 plus $200 per hour, subject to a minimum retainer of $5,000 for requested services related to employee bargaining, legal matters, and disputes, or other similar issues, and authorizes the execution of the Advisory Agreement Service Addendum. A municipal order accepting grant funds through the Linda and Jerry Bruckheimer Preservation Fund for a grant in the amount of $10,000 in partnership with the Paducah Art House Alliance for the Columbia Theater Roof Restoration and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order accepting the donation of real property located at 831 Campbell Street from Sabrina Incorporated and Richard O'Hare to the City of Paducah and authorizing the mayor to execute the deed of consideration certificate. A municipal order authorizing the application for brownfields grant through the United States Environmental Protection Agency in an amount of $300,000 for assessment and cleanup of brownfields in and around the opportunity zone.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. And Commissioner Abraham?
Excuse me. I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order approving change order number one with Young Blood Escavating and Contracting LLC for a contract reduction in the amount of $16,208 for construction of the Greenway Trail Phase Four and authorizing the mayor to execute the change order be adopted.
Second. Thank you.
Mayor Commissioner, it's not often that I get to come up here and talk about change orders to the south, and normally they're to the north, but I'm proud to announce this evening that the $16,208 was below the bid award amount. So we finished that project, as far as the construction itself, with a reduction, and this is just more of a bookkeeping thing for our grants authorities.
All right. Any questions? Any celebrations? Thank you, Rick. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. What would happen if we voted that down? That'd be silly. All right. Commissioner McElroy?
Yes. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky approving and authorizing the execution of an interlocal cooperative agreement among the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the McCracken County Property Evaluation Administrator for the hiring of a new employee to complete property inspections within the city limits of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the execution of an interlocal cooperative agreement between the City of Paducah and McCracken County Property Evaluation Administration for the purpose of hiring a new employee for the PVA to complete property inspections within the City of Paducah. This interlocal cooperative agreement will be in the amount of $13,335 with a term beginning on the date of execution until September 30th, 2020.
Second.
Any comments, questions about this tonight?
I have noticed that the PVA is doing a lot of education on Facebook and concluding city properties lately about how it works and what he's assessing and things that have changed.
He's actually here tonight. Are you here? Oh, hey there. So, thank you for that. It's been really helpful.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions? No? All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. And Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving contract amendment number two with HDR Engineering, Inc. for a price increase in the amount of $46,689 for professional design services for the Greenway Trail Phase Four project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah approves and authorizes the execution of contract amendment number two to the contract with HDR Engineering, Inc. for the Greenway Trail Phase Four project. This amendment increases the contract cost by $46,689 for additional labor hours already completed, final record drawings, final walkthrough, and approval of remaining payment applications, resulting in a total contract price of $134,189.
Second.
Mayor Commissioner, I have Scott Brown here with me this evening, representing HDR. If there's any questions you should ask Mr. Brown, he'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions on this specific item? Do you want to give us kind of an overview of why?
Of why?
Yes.
Sure. As part of the project, we were to inspect the contractor's work. We ended up having to spend more time inspecting the contractor's work. There were deficiencies, things that needed to be changed. There were some sections that were torn out, had to be replaced, issues that required us to be onsite and monitor more closely what the contractor was doing, just because it was a very important project. You know, five inches of concrete, four inches of rock was the main section. For some reason, we had a hard time getting that, so we had to be there more to make sure we were getting what we were paying for. So I've kept Rick and Melanie abreast of everything that's happened. They agreed that we needed to continue to monitor what was happening and follow it more closely because we wanted a very good product. It's a very prominent project in view of a lot of people, and we wanted a good product. So that's why we continued, and it just took more time to make it happen.
Okay. I have a question for Rick. Is there a way that we can, that we get cost recovery out of that? I'm kind of curious if the recent municipal order we just passed is included in some of that cost recovery?
Okay. That's, that's one thing I wanted to cover.
Okay.
We had a total of $650,000 budget for this project. With the previous change order going south, and with HDR's addition for the additional onsite inspection, we are still $11,400 under our total budget for this. So we're still going to have money left over in the project budget even with this. And without the, I guess, additional onsite field observation, we wouldn't be as proud of our project without that. So, so that's why we're here.
Great. Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah authorizing City Manager and Finance Director to implement service fees for the acceptance of credit card, debit card, and e-check payments by the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City Manager and the City Finance Director to establish and implement a credit card and debit card service fee not to exceed 4% and an e-check processing fee of $1.50 to cover the city's cost of accepting such payment forms.
Second.
Hi, Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners and City Manager. Staff has been working hard on a service enhancement that is accepting debit and credit cards at the counter, as well as online processing for credit cards, debit cards, and electronic checks. So there are fees associated with accepting this type of payment. So the recommendation is, what this ordinance is doing is authorizing us to be able to pass along the service fee associated with those types of payments. This is consistent with what the, you know, similar fees passed on by the county and schools and other cities in our region, so we did look at that. We also wanted to mention that we will be diligent in our efforts to keep the service fees as low as possible for our customers, and the fee can be avoided by paying with cash or check or other traditional methods, so it's not mandatory that anyone pays with these.
I really struggle with this one because I feel like in 2019, most of us are used to not paying service fees for convenience like that in the consumer world. I understand in paying taxes and government's a little bit different. I know when Paducah Water added theirs, there was quite a bit of pushback from the public about that. But I do recall, I think there was an estimated cost to the taxpayer that you all crunched at one point?
Yes.
And it was, it was a very high number, hundreds of thousands, maybe even a million dollars that this would cost the city government if we actually didn't pass on that fee.
That's correct. That's correct. It is, when you do not pass on the service fee, you know, we encourage people to use credit cards too in some ways, and so that can make that fee go very high, and the impact to our general fund for accepting those types of payments would put an additional burden when we have pension fees and, and other items that are increasing.
Currently, we don't accept credit cards.
That's correct.
Or debit cards or e-payments. So it's not a new fee, it's just a fee on a new service.
Exactly. And this is for property taxes, occupational licenses. It will eventually hit the codes and permitting teams, so it's primarily the revenues in City Hall.
I mean, customers are used to paying by check or credit, check or cash now.
Yes.
So it's just if they choose this option, then there is the fee.
Yes.
Right. I went online to pay my county taxes today and realized they passed the fee to me, so I backed right back out of it and wrote a check. The old-fashioned way.
And they will be aware of the fee before, you know. It shows.
I noticed on the county tax bill as well, it says on there that there's a convenience fee to be assessed on the bill.
Right.
Do you know what percent it was?
I don't remember. I wasn't willing to pay any percent.
I see it was up to 4 also. What's it, we're doing 2% or 4%?
I think they have a little bit different structure than us, where they have a flat fee and a potential percentage, but don't quote me on that. That's not.
Was there a $100 check also, a $1.50 that I hear?
E-check, I think is what she said.
So that's if you-
Electronic check.
Oh, gotcha.
Yes. That would just be if you pay online with an e-check.
Any other questions, comments? No? All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Abraham?
Ah, here we go. Pardon me. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends section 1431 and 1432 of the Paducah Code of Ordinances to restrict dogs at special community events. This amendment defines special community events as all events permitted within the city limits regardless of whether the city is the organizer or sponsor. This restriction shall not apply to service dogs or to dogs whose owner's residence is located within the area designated for special events so long as all service and resident dogs are restrained by a leash or other lead that is no longer than three feet. This restriction shall also not apply to events which specifically provide for the includes, and include, that dogs may be brought into the area for the permitted event.
Second. Any questions, comments?
I have a couple of questions for clarification. When I read that, I didn't catch that last part about, will you read that last part again?
About events that specifically like for dogs?
Yeah. So like, if I am an, oh, I'm an event organizer and I file a permit, and I say I'm going to have a 5K to support type 2 diabetes, and I want to allow dogs at my event on my permit, is that going to be allowed?
That's a question that Lindsay and I talked about here today. The intent of the, the ordinance was to make it so dogs were permitted to be at events that were for dogs. Example, that would be the, the event they had down at the Stuart Nelson Park for the, was it like?
Wolftober.
Wolftoberfest for animals. But if you look at, as the city clerk tried to look at this afternoon, if you look at section 1432A3, it says the permit for the event specifically provides for and includes that dogs may be brought into the area for the permitted event, and the dog is restrained by, and the dog is restrained by a leash or other lead that is no longer than three feet. So if you look at that three, the intent of that is to be for Wolftober. However, there does have a latitude in there where an event provider could, could put a request in their application for this special event to allow for dogs to be at their event. So it depends upon if this body wants to make an amendment to the ordinance to tighten that verbiage up a little bit, so it meets the intent of what the board wants.
I actually really like that. I don't think I realized that was in there like that because it's almost like we're saying by default, we're going to not allow dogs, but if an organizer specifically wants to, they opt in. So that's a good way to do that.
So an organizer could say that dogs are allowed?
Yeah.
Could they do that?
Pursuant to that paragraph, that would be yes. That's how I read that paragraph.
So then it is true that if I'm an organizer for a type 2 diabetes 5K and I say I would like to permit dogs to be included in my event, then this would allow that to happen?
As long as they're on, as it says on there, no longer than three feet.
Okay.
A lead or leash.
I didn't catch that.
So, I'm just going to say, other events then that are held downtown, like Oktoberfest or some of that, I think I mentioned that one when you were talking about other events that had dogs there. There were a lot of dogs at that event, too. If that organizer put in their permit they wanted to allow dogs at their event?
If it was a permit that was approved by the city, then they would be permitted at that event under this paragraph.
As with like Barbecue on the River, which is the reason why we're even having this conversation.
Right.
If the organizers did not say that, which I can't imagine they would, then they would by default not be allowed.
They'd be restricted.
They'd be restricted.
Well, my thinking on, on this is the, I've seen so many different races, 5K or whatever, folks run with their dogs all the time. I don't see that particular event like a barbecue on the river or an Oktoberfest or Fourth of July, something like that. But if, I mean, if, if, that's, that's kind of loopy right there as far as if it's my event and I want dogs, I can write in there that, you know, I'm the event organizer, I want dogs regardless of what the ordinance says.
It's kind of opposite of what, when we initiated it before.
Right.
I thought that initially we were saying that they could limit not allowing dogs there, but no one had, so everyone had been having dogs.
It's the opposite of what you did last time.
So this is going back to the opposite way of if they want them, they have to put that in their request.
And it has to be approved by the city.
It has to be approved by the city.
So we would have the, the city, somebody from the city would make that decision, like for barbecue on the river, we're not going to allow you to have dogs.
Well, let's say, for example, we use that as the example, barbecue in the river permit, and they request dogs be permitted in their area, and then that would come before the city, and then we would have to make that determination and say, we're not going to allow this due to these public safety issues or reasons. And then we would give that back to them so they were understood that those would not be allowed in that festival. But if they don't make that as a request on their application, they would not be permitted through this ordinance.
City personnel can interpret this with using the intent of the original ordinance right. So I mean, obviously, if you have a event that should include dogs, then, and they make the request, then it would assumably be approved, but just for some organizer who wanted to have dogs at barbecue on the river, for instance, I know they wouldn't, but then looking at the intent of the ordinance, then the city could be within bounds of the interpretation to say, no, we're not going to. Is it written away that would?
I think ultimately it comes back down to the, the city making that decision whether to allow or not allow under their special event permit request, but this does open up that opportunity for them to request it, and opens up the opportunity for the city to approve it.
Well, why don't we just make this simple and not allow dogs at, at events?
I think we have to, I mean, yes, we can do that, and I would say, and, I still think we need to add in some verbiage in here or change the verbiage if that's the desire of the board, to allow dogs to participate at events designed for dogs.
Right.
Because we do have those.
Yeah. What is it, Wolftober or what is it?
Wolftoberfest and, and other events that may come along, you know, because dogs are an important part of our culture and our society.
Right. I've got two dogs. I love them. When I die, I want to come back as my dog because we take good care of him.
There are, as you mentioned, 5Ks. I know that the Carson Center, I think, just recently had one where they had a lot of dogs there. I think it was Halloween.
It was their Halloween, yes.
You know, and they did have a lot there. It was a, there was a 5K, but then there were also other events on their lawn.
Was that a Howl Halloween? A little play on words.
I think, I think it was.
It was something, I know it was their event to tie in with Halloween.
Oh, it was Project Hope also. That certainly was a dog-related event.
Well, that would be covered in the ordinance. I'm okay with this verbiage myself. If it proves to be a problem, we can tighten it up.
I am, too. I don't, I don't know. I struggle with the cutting it all off completely approach. I really do. That's why I really liked this. This was a surprise for me. I did not catch this language in this way when I read through it the first time. So I like the by default, we don't allow them, but when you request it, it's under consideration. And, you know, I was thinking about, too, for barbecue on the river with these big permitted events, there's a lot of team meetings about these. It's not just this, here's your paperwork, yes or no. That's not how it works. It's here's the paperwork, here's what we intend to do with our permit, and then there's team meetings about how to make it go and how to, you know, shift things around. So it's not so black and white. So I think those, it lends itself an opportunity to have those conversations with event organizers. Are you sure you want this public safety issue? You know, those kinds of things.
Another large festival that comes to my mind is the Fourth of July Independence Day Festival, but that's a city festival.
Absolutely.
You know, so that wouldn't even be an issue for us. So we could restrict it from that.
Any other comments? No? All right. Commissioner McElroy?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends section 106-126 of the Paducah Code of Ordinances to raise the insurance premium tax from 6% to 7%. The increase of this insurance premium tax will provide additional revenue that is necessary to assist in the funding of employing pensions as well as the funding of the design, construction, administration, and construction of an indoor recreation and aquatic facility for the use by the citizens of the City of Paducah. The full text of each section that imposes taxes shall be published in accordance with KRS 83A.060.
Second.
All right. Any comments, questions?
I guess if we had any public comments, that would be, we would have them later. Can you drive a comment about this?
The next meeting or tonight, whichever one. I did bring this big book-
Yeah.
-that we all received from the designers, and this is just phase one of what they are working on for us. This is the Aquatic and Community Center feasibility study, which has a bunch of information in here about projected, actually, site selection, possible programming, possible what's going to be in there, market feasibility study. And so I am just really proud, and I think we've picked the right partners with BFW and Markham Engineering locally, to be looking at this from a business model perspective, that we're looking at this on how do we get it to break even?
Right.
How do we not take taxpayer dollars to operate this long-term, but how do we make sure there's revenue coming in the door? And I just think that's how we make this sustainable and how we use our taxpayer dollars wisely. So I'm really proud of the process that we're going through, and I just can't wait to get it finished.
I'm super excited about this. I went through one of their facilities that they designed in Coleman, Alabama. If you're headed south, it's not far off the highway, right before you get to Birmingham, about 30 minutes. It was spectacular. It looked brand new. It was eight years old. You just thought, this is a place where community's going to live. People are going to come here every day. They're going to enjoy exercise classes. The pool was beautiful. They've got great ideas for our design, runout slides. In addition, could be a ninja course across the pool, which I think would just be super cool. You know, we need to be more active. We need to give kids better opportunities. We need places for therapy for some of us as we're getting older that is healthy, like water aerobics and swimming. And get a cute swim hat, it works, you know, but, and we've got a swim team where we have team where we have some great swimmers that need better facilities to practice in. It's going to have a phenomenal indoor walking track that I think a lot of people are excited about. It will be a place for community just to come and enjoy being together. I'm super excited about it. I think it's a great economic incentive. When we are looking at trying to attract people to come to Paducah businesses, we're really attracting people, and they're looking for amenities, and they're looking at small towns more than they have in the past. And I think this is something that's really going to up our game and make us a place more people want to be. I'm super excited about it.
Yeah, I think it'll make us more competitive in that area, too, in the area of job recruitment, which is a very competitive industry, and you know better than anyone, Commissioner Wilson. And that's where we've lacked in the past. And it is a factor that employers consider when they decide where they want to locate a facility. And so it ups our quality of life and makes us much more attractive. And I think we'll reap some dividends from it in the way of job recruitment.
Our community's been waiting for it. They've been asking and begging and meeting with us and talking to us for several years about this. So I'm glad that we're taking the next step to do that. And it's a very small increase. I wish there were other ways to do it, but right now, we're very, very limited on the ways that we can raise money. Even with this, we are way under where most communities are on their insurance premium tax. I think you all looked at that and saw that we saw the list. So we're still very competitive and not even at the part where many other communities that we compete with are.
Yeah, who we compare ourselves to.
Right.
Yes. I'd like just to add that a year from now, it's under construction. Two years from now, it's about to open.
It's very exciting. Well, I appreciate you bringing up the tax of other communities. I do have some of those numbers I will share with you all. Owensboro is at 10%. Hopkinsville is eight and a half. Elizabeth Town is at eight. Murray, Kentucky, just down the street, is at eight and a half percent. Bowling Green is at seven, so we'll be equal to Bowling Green. Henderson is 10. Madisonville is 10, and Mayfield is nine. So we're still under most of our competitive cities. So I'm proud that we could pull this off with such a small increase. Seriously, that's a big accomplishment for our team, that's for sure.
Do you want to add, too? We have public, we have two women that are serving on the design committee that have swimmers and vested interests. So there's a lot of people that are having input and sitting around the table and trying to figure out the very best facility for us. So it's exciting.
And it goes back to that really good private and public partnership with the Friends of the Park organization. They're really stepping up, raising those funds, getting the monies in place, hoping to have that endowment formed where they would be able to help us with operations and maintenance costs over that first four, you know, four years until we're at that break-even point. Very exciting. It's a good partnership.
Great. Any other comment? No? All right. Roll call. Nope, not roll call. Sorry. Getting ahead of myself. Commissioner Watkins.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky authorizing the issuance of City of Paducah, Kentucky General Obligation Bond, the Series 2020A, and the approximate aggregate principal amount of $22 million, subject to a permitted adjustment increasing the principal amount of bonds up by up to $2,200,000, or decreasing the principal amount of bonds by any amount for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the cost of the acquisition, construction, equipping, and installation of a municipal sports and recreational facility located within the jurisdictional boundaries of the city, approving the forms of the bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of a notice with the state local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating a bond payment fund, maintaining the heretofore established sinking fund, authorizing acceptance of the bids of the bond purchaser for the purchase of the bonds, and repealing inconsistent ordinances. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds designated as Series 2020A in the approximate principal amount of $22 million. The bonds by the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the city, the bonds are to be issued for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the cost of the acquisition, construction, equipping, and installation of a municipal sports and recreational facility located within the jurisdictional boundaries of the city consisting of, without limitation, an indoor aquatic facility with competitive swimming, warm water, and therapy amenities, basketball, volleyball, weightlifting, fitness, running, and walking amenities, concession amenities, viewing areas, locker rooms, childcare space, and meeting space. Provisions are made in the ordinance for the payment of the bonds and the security therefore, for the application proceeds of the bond, proceeds of the bonds, for the establishment of a bond payment fund, or the maintenance of the previously established sinking fund, and for certain covenants of the city with respect to the bonds. The bonds are to be sold at public competitive sale and shall mature or be subject to mandatory sinking fund redemption in varying amounts on February 1, 2020, and each February 1 thereafter through February 1, 2039. The bonds pledge the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the city, and provision is made for the collection of a tax to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds, subject to certain credits as provided in section seven of the ordinance. The full text of each section that imposes fees or taxes shall be published in accordance with KRS 83A dot zero six zero.
Second.
Any comment? Questions? We have Mark here. Mark Rawlings here tonight. If you have any questions about the actual bond issuance or any of that information.
Mark, why don't you and John come up if you can? I just want to say just a few words that, kind of thinking back to biblical days, if you will, but it talks about in the Book of Proverbs that, you know, no man, I'm going to paraphrase here, you know, builds a house, in this case, built a sports complex, without first considering the costs, right? So that's what we're doing here. We've been eyes wide open going into this, not just the cost of the design, not just the cost of the construction, but also the cost of the annual upkeep, maintenance, and operations, and also looking forward in the future about cost of capital replacement. So what we're looking at here is initially a bond issue to be issued to cover those soft costs and hard costs associated with the facility. That includes equipping the facility. You know, you'd hate to have a facility look great on all your four walls with nothing inside it. So it's going into the soft cost and hard cost of bringing together what's projected to be right now, a 60,000 square foot facility, you know, for the residents of Paducah. I think it's just an amazing project. I refer to it as a legacy project. It's going to be here for 40 to 50 years from now, and probably even more than that. And it's going to have generations of Padukans in that facility using it. Generations of visitors will be coming to town using it. So I'm extremely proud about it. The bond issue we have before you, we have Baird, our financial advisor here, can kind of give you the nuts and bolts of it, but really what it's paying for is the, we're looking at the aquatic facilities. We're looking at the swim team competitions. We're looking at recreational pool, warm water therapy pool, looking at an extremely large indoor walking track. And driving to work today, 16 degrees outside, it'd be nice to be able to go someplace where I can walk or run. And it's almost a quarter mile long.
Amazing.
You know, so that's big. That is really big. So it's not one of those places you have to run around 24 times to get a mile, you know?
Get dizzy.
We're talking about a nice-sized facility to really embrace wellness. And that's what it's all about, is embracing wellness. And then partnering with the Friends of the Park community, also partnering, looking to branch out, working with local medical providers to see if they're interested in partnering with us in this project, as well as local, I'd say, grantors, if you will, and people who want to potentially look at some naming rights for this facility. So we have a lot of ways to go to get additional revenue to really make this come into be a tremendous project for us. The pine cost right now are $20,321,896. You know, that's now, looking forward. But of course, it all depends upon the program that goes into it. But the program that's into it now is projecting us to break even in year five, which is really good for a new adventure, you know? And then you have behind you, supporting you, if you will, you have the Friends of the Park that's ramping up to be able to help cover those costs, those initial years, then help to build funds for capital replacement in the future years. And then, of course, we have the economic impact, something I didn't even think about. The economic impact that's being projected, $509,000 in year one, that's going to come into the community. So $509,000 of new money coming into the community. Then year five, $1.1 million of new money coming into the community. So, and those are all very conservative numbers. I did share with you guys the pro forma. You can kind of look through that. And the data that the company used is just fantastic. And the great thing about working with SFA on that data is that they back it up, you know? They're saying, hey, we don't want to just tell you these numbers. We're willing to come and manage this facility for you, and we're going to use those numbers. He holds accountable to those numbers. So it's really exciting. So people sometimes think, you can build it, but how can you afford to use it? We know going in beforehand how we can afford to use it. With that, I'll turn it over to you guys to kind of help us through the bond issue, if you will. I got the cheerleading speech. He's the technical speaker.
Well, thank you, guys. We appreciate the opportunity to come tonight. As Jim mentioned, this is an exciting opportunity. Moving the table. The bond issue itself, the authorized amount in the ordinance is 22 million. But I want to be clear that we're not intending to go out with a $22 million bond issue. That was sort of an artificially high number just to give ourselves flexibility. If the project scope widened, we'd have a little bit of room to go up if we need it. But we also gave ourselves an unlimited amount downward so that if project scope has reined in, we've got room to go down as well. We intend to sell bonds the first week of January, which is historically a very great time to sell bonds. Rates are extremely low right now. If we could sell them today, we'd be looking at slightly less than 3% for a 20-year bond issue, and that's including all costs of issuance. So that's an extremely low rate. These are historically low rates. There's not been a better time, at least in the 15 years that I've been doing public finance to issue debt. So this is a great time. We've got to get through the rating process. The city is rated very strongly by Standard and Poor's. I don't expect any changes there. We'll get through that in December. Sell bonds, lock in our rates the first week of January, and we'll close the third week of January, and you guys will have your money and be off and running.
I think we should call this the John Perkins facility because we have incredible ratings, not just because of John. He has a great team. He always says this, but a lot, his legacy that he has in your career here. So thank you. I'm serious. It means a lot that we can make this decision with this body because of the work that you've done.
A huge part of your strong bond rating is the fiscal prudence with which the city has historically acted. And that helps you in turn. It's just like, you know, going to get, buy a new house, you know? The better you are with your own money, the higher your credit score, and the lower your interest rate. I mean, that's, it's very similar to what we're seeing on bonds. And I did want to comment, the structure of the repayment of the bonds, we're doing it strategically so that we can eliminate the reliance on the insurance premium tax as quickly as we can so that the payments on these bonds can be supported by currently budgeted funds. So we're structuring it to kind of take advantage of payments that are falling off of other bond issues to eliminate reliance on that new tax as quickly as possible.
That's great.
And so for a one-time donation of approximately $22 million, one can have their name on the facility on a very busy street.
Have their name on the bathroom. They don't have to do anything.
And we wouldn't have to sell the bonds.
Yeah, there you go.
Between now and January 1. All right, the word's out.
They should get a key to the joint for that.
I didn't have a key.
Everything should be named after that person, whoever that might be. That's a lot of money. I would like to add one thing, though, that I'm really excited about, and I'm hoping that we're still going to be able to move forward with this. If you remember in our RFQ, when we called for requests for potential designers and engineers, we did ask them to get creative with an innovative approach to this project. And recently, I was really thinking about something I've been hearing from my peers a lot, and maybe even your grandchildren, is this thought that we don't have enough indoor facilities for children to play. Water is great, and I'm excited about the water feature, but not every person, not every parent wants to have to undress and dress their children in a water activity all the time. And so there's been a lot of talk about children's museums and indoor children's play areas and things like that. And so I'm hoping that that might become some part of the innovative approach to this facility so it's not just another recreation center, but we have this added feature that a lot of them don't have. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that might pan out for this as well. Any other questions, comments about bond issues? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Do you have anything else?
No, I sent my speech.
Okay. You dropped the mic, right? All right. Let's move into discussion about holiday meeting schedule. Is that the city clerk, or is that?
I'll turn it over.
Okay, all right, great.
Yeah, so we have the holidays coming up and just want to confirm the upcoming meeting dates. November 26, December 10, and then a called meeting on December 17, where we would be potentially having a called meeting that night because the regular meeting would fall on Christmas, so.
And that December 17 meeting is a critical meeting for the fire department in their efforts to get to full staffing in January. Chief Cowd expressed to me that he really needs that second meeting in December to be able to make his staffing moves that he needs to make for the year.
So it's November 26, December 17, and what?
December 10.
I think those are the dates you sent to us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
At least you're definite now, all three of them.
If you're good with it.
Except for this body.
Is everyone available?
Pending no grandbaby.
Oh, right. My birthday's on the 18th, so if you guys celebrate with me, I'll come on the 17th.
Mine's the 23rd.
Oh, that's right. All right, great. Well, I think we're good.
Let's not come back.
Sounds like we need some cake that night.
I think so.
Mine's the 8th.
December turns out to be a good month.
I'll be 41.
Right, and I'll be 40, period.
I will actually be 37.
We're not going to tell. We're glad you can.
I remember when I was 37 about last century.
All right, we're going to move on to comments from the city manager.
I have none, Madam Mayor. Just excited about the, I guess I do have one. I'm excited about the projects we're working on. We have a lot of big things in the oven, if you will. So it's good to see them all baked up and cooked up.
Yep. Any comments from the commissioners tonight?
Well, I have a whole list. Where do we even start?
All right. Get us started.
Well, I thought yesterday was a great day. Congratulations. I know you took a lot of, big part in planning that. It was great. I didn't make it to the 6:30 AM session, but I made it to most everything else. The awards inside was really, it was a really nice ceremony. I've been for many, many, for several years outside, and it was cold, and you couldn't even hear what was going on. And I felt like maybe we didn't recognize those people as well as we did yesterday by being inside and having such a large crowd, large crowd. It was great to see the schoolchildren there. So, and then the concert last night was great, too. So congratulations. It was really good. And I know we thanked all of our sponsors yesterday, but thanks again to all of our sponsors. It was just a really nice event. I think we should celebrate again the fact that we are one of 54 build grants in this country. There were 54 selected, three from Kentucky, us, Campbellsville, and then I believe around the Georgetown area was the third one, 10.4 million, with a 1.1 million commitment from the city. So congratulations to us, y'all. I mean, this is, this is huge. It was a really big event, and I hope that people understand that, you know, it was very, very competitive, as we heard many times, and to have been selected is a really big deal.
Absolutely.
Congratulations to us. And then the SHIFT workshop on Saturday, I was able to be here to be one of the judges. And there was one project presented that was ready to go. And I think that through the Kentucky Arts Council funds, we were able to fund them at half of what they needed. And the other judges in the Kentucky Arts Council said we would support them. I stopped short of committing city funds. I was asking Lindsay, what can we do here? But it was Arts in the Park was selected, and it would be held in July, every Saturday at a different park with a different art organization. So there were some great people on those committees. I don't know how some of them, they have to have more than 24 hours in the day to be able to participate and do as much as they did. So that one was, we felt like the judges panel felt like they were, it was ready to go. There was a second project that had some really great steam about it and some great interest, and we were able to fund them to bring in a consultant from the Kentucky Arts Council that could get them to the next step. And that was expanding the pocket parks throughout some of our lands in the city. So we felt like that one wasn't quite ready as far as the funding and some of the things that they needed to do. But I believe with the assistance from this, from a consultant with Kentucky Arts Council, they could get there to have a better, have a good plan. It was a great plan. Both of them were great projects, and we really appreciated all of the participants that took part in that. And I know Lindsay coordinated that, so thank you for that, too. It was a really great day. I hope we can get them, I think you're planning on having them come back to present to us. So I want you all to hear those projects. They were both great projects that would really make a difference in the community, in our city.
They come back that first meeting in December? Is that when they're coming?
We're looking at the November 26 meeting.
Our next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Great. They were great projects. We really appreciated their participation. They spent two and a half days with, working on that with the Kentucky Arts Council, and then the SHIFT coordinators, I believe she was from Berea.
Mm-hmm.
That was here.
From the Air Institute in Berea.
Right. Great. I had met her at that Creative Arts event that you had.
Right, great, I had met her at that Creative Council, Creative Arts event that you had.
The symposium?
The symposium.
Yeah, she was here for that.
And talked to her then about coming back to do something with us, so it was great to have her back for that, so it was great. I think we've had a lot of exciting things going on. I said this was going to be a year celebrating, so yes, let's continue.
Keep it going.
Yep. Well, I do want to mention the Veterans Day Parade, because there were so many people in our community who put a lot of time and energy into making that happen. The convention center and the staff there said yes, really, really quickly, back in probably February or March when I brought this idea to them for that location, they did most of this on their own dime. We did have sponsors that are going to cover some of the real hard costs that they had to incur. WPSD and the Paducah Sun, Bill Evans and Perry Box, they sat in on every single meeting, helping us plan and make sure this year was an all-day celebration for what we were able to accomplish. Our staff, the Parks Department, Mark Thompson and Molly and Kelsey, all helped make sure that we could do way more than just the parade, and that we used our Lindsey Bird song, got involved. So we had so many people from the community not even questioned it at all. I don't know if you all noticed, but we also gave out challenge coins to veterans all throughout the day, and that became a very special token of our appreciation. During each event, we would ask veterans to stand, and then actually in the morning, the 101st Airborne was there, and the soldiers passed out those coins, which I thought was a really special, special thing. The 101st also, I mean, they really helped us blow this out of the park. I will never forget when we were sitting on that stage, waiting for those doors to open, and all of a sudden, I told my husband, it was like Price is Right. The, all the equipment was back there, and the kids got to see it, they got to get on it, they got to go around and meet soldiers. There was a beautiful picture McNabb posted on Facebook of a soldier tying a little boy's shoe. So there was just a really good opportunity for our community to celebrate. So yeah, thank you all so much for your support in that, and I appreciate you all being there, and thank you for your service, sir. I didn't get to say that yesterday.
Thank you, appreciate the thing.
Absolutely. Anything else anyone wants to mention tonight?
Yeah, just want to talk a little bit about the, I'm sure we've gotten a lot of emails and conversations about the proposed hotel on the, on the city block, and it's nice to have options. So I went back and I looked at the downtown hotel market study, and it was within our Tiff district, there were, there were some other, some other sites there, and there was a table there that kind of laid out the dimensions, and depending on the dimension, how many rooms, from 30 to 110 rooms, that kind of thing, information that was, that was, that was great information to have. So I'm looking at the lot across from the old nursing home parking lot, former site of the old nursing home across from the Holiday Inn currently. And looking at those, looking at those numbers, and what that lot could hold according to the data that we received, it's just under, it's right at like, it would be like 90 rooms, which is just under what our proposed, what the proposed hotel would be. And that's a nice, that's a nice site, and it's just down from what we're talking about possibly putting a new hotel. It's, and that corridor, all of a sudden, that corridor is, is hopping off the page now with the funds that we got for the riverfront development. And the anchor of that corridor now is the Carson Center. And all of these things that we're talking about possibly adding downtown is, for one thing, to draw people downtown, and then other things starts to happen. If I'm an entrepreneur and I want my business where the action is, well, all of a sudden, it's downtown. So I got to find a building downtown to get, so I can be right in the middle of it. So I bring that up because I want to keep an open mind on this, and I've just been focusing on that one spot, but when I go back and I look at these, when I look at that, that old nursing home site, that's an attractive lot, and it's, it's, it's not small, it's not huge, but I think, I think that would be a nice spot for a hotel, and just to fill that, that corridor up right there with what we have coming with the, with the riverfront development. So that's, just want to put that out there. I'm taking a second look at that, and just looking at the data that we were, that we were afforded, it's not that far off, and it's within where we want to do what we want to do.
Well, like Commissioner Abraham, I want to keep an open mind on this, too, but I like, that site is attractive in that it adds stability and activity to the convention center, which we already own over there, that's, I guess, a million dollar plus facility. And to me, if you're, if you're going to be competitive with conventions, you got to have some hotel space right close to it, as close as possible, then certainly a short walking distance. So that's a plus, too. It strengthens the stability, financial stability of the convention center that we own. So I'm keeping an open mind on it, but I think that makes that site attractive, too.
I think we're all keeping an open mind, and that's really what I've asked citizens to do as well. I think there are some, that land that you're talking about is still under option from another developer.
Yeah, it's about a year and a half left.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I've been meaning to ask when that develops. So I know that it's tied up for a while, as far as that, and then also, the other thing is to keep in mind, the developers, you know, there's a lot of process to work through. Where the developer who's going to invest their money, where they want to be, where we own land that we can use, so there's, there are a lot of considerations that we need to take, and I just ask everyone to please keep an open mind as we work through the process, absolutely.
Absolutely. I'm curious, how did you know 90 rooms could fit on there?
Well, the information that we got on the, there's a, there is a grid, it's a, it's all estimate, it's a prototypical hotel development and parking sizing based on number of rooms.
But specifically per lot, per site?
Yeah, it's, I'll send it to you.
Oh, I didn't notice that part.
Yeah, it was, it was sent to us.
In the hotel study, is it in the hotel study?
Yeah.
Okay, I just didn't see that part. So it's per site, how many rooms could fit on each site?
Number of rooms, and it goes from 30 to 110 rooms, and then it breaks down total space required in square footage, and then it has the number of rooms.
Okay, per site, okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Just from historical perspective, we bought that land.
Yeah.
For the potential for a hotel.
Right.
So I don't think anybody's opposed to that site, it's just trying to make it work, taking everything into consideration, because that's what it was bought for.
Right, so it's in.
Torn down, so it was a plan.
So it's in play, I mean.
It was in the plan that someday that that would be, that, and really, with the previous developer, I believe that we gave them that option, that they could look at either piece of land for it, they chose where they are now, which was great, because it's right by it, and they could build a little bit bigger hotel there than the second property, and then they have the option on that second property now.
That's first refusal.
Right.
So we, if someone wants to, if I want to build a hotel there, and like, well, hang on a second, excuse me, do you want to build on that? Okay, then I'm off. I'm good to go, I'm ready to go.
I'd love to.
So that's the out on the option end, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I would just like to say that I would like for them not to say no. Can I just say that? I mean, I think for us, our best-case scenario is for all developers to be developing. I mean, that's, that's what we're going to do. And so they, I would like for them to say yes.
Absolutely.
And then for us to figure out how we can get this third, that'll be a third hotel structure, hotel property in our downtown. And if you, you know, people don't, I can't decide if people like for us to compare to Owensboro now, or we don't like to anymore, so.
It depends on the day and the hour.
Yeah, I'm just going to bring it up.
I've never liked that at all.
Okay, great, then I'm not going to bring it up. Other communities like SIZED that are growing, Madisonville's a good example, I mean, there's other examples that is in Owensboro, have multiple properties downtown for people to stay, and they try to find that mix, which I think is what we're doing, is trying to find this mix of creating a neighborhood out of downtown, a business district out of downtown, and a tourism. And I think we can have all three of those if we're smart, and that would be the vision that I would have for our unique downtown, so that all people can enjoy what we have.
Right. But I think your point about keeping an open mind is excellent. That's what I've said to people in the community that are, that are for and against. The people have come up to me, said, I love what you're doing, I said, great, thank you, keep an open mind as we move it forward. People that have said something else, I've said, great, keep an open mind as we move forward, because we don't know exactly right now. It's a process that we're working through.
Yeah, I've had people say this is a done deal. If it is, I need to see what it is, but it's not a done deal by any stretch of the imagination. And I think the fact that we've got the build grant does make the entire riverfront area more attractive, all of it. I'm super excited about it, and I definitely want some chess tables in this. Just want to go on record, because those kids came here maybe a year and a half ago.
I remember.
Yeah. Outdoor chess is big.
Or our school system, there's, there's chess clubs all over.
It might not be a Department of Transportation alloc, I mean, of, what's the word?
Allocation from them, part of that. But it could be city funds.
Or maybe we could give fundraising by the chess clubs of McCracken County.
And you know, one thing that I don't, I don't think we talked about.
They're not that expensive.
The other night at the build grant announcement, is about all of the steamboats coming in and applying or trying to become a port of call for them. If we, if we said it the other day, I may be repeating it, I don't think we did. But I think that now, I mean, I saw the steam, the pictures of one of the riverboats unloading the other day, it just reminded me, because I posted, well, soon they'll have a safer place to do that, but they are always, they love Paducah, I hear that all the time. It's one of their favorite stops, I'm sorry, what?
Didn't we used to be?
A port of call for them? I don't think so. Where they left from here, the boats came in, and the people come here and leave on the boat?
Long time ago. I'm just, I'm just saying.
Way before me, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But we haven't been in a long time. And that industry is expanding, so the thought that, you know, now that we have the new unloading dock for them, and we could offer more amenities downtown for them, maybe we could. And I understand they usually fly in, so another argument for the new terminal at Berkeley Regional Airport, which is our next project to be working on to help them, but that's exciting, they could fly in or drive in, stay downtown, get on the riverboat and be gone, and then come back, and so they would experience, use it as a community for the experience of that. So I hope that's something that as we move forward with getting the build grant implemented and, you know, the construction started, that we begin that process, too. And I don't know what the process is, but I hope that we can work with Mary and CBB on that.
Well, it was actually the company representatives that wrote our letters of support that mentioned that to us. We didn't even think about it until they mentioned it. And when they wrote their letters of support to say, hey, we're building new boats, we want to add more boats to Paducah, they literally have letters of support in our application